While we honor America and we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you very much. Madam clerk, please give us the roll. Roll call.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Seven present.
Moving on with the agenda, spotlight on excellence, United States Department of Education, Mathematics and Science Partnerships Conference. And I'm honored to recognize some great teachers who have done exemplary work representing the Lowell School Department. For the Spotlight on Excellence Plan for Wednesday, April 15th, I am pleased to inform you that the recent United States Department of Education Mathematics and Science Partnerships Conference in Chicago, Lowell was fortunate to have representation from two educators, M. Claire Abrams, K through 12 Coordinator for Mathematics, and Martha Con, Grade 5 through 8 Science Teacher from the Wang Middle School. Both presented to educators from all over the United States. The presentation entitled Massachusetts Intensive Immersion Institute discussed the content-focused courses in mathematics and science that have been ongoing in the Lowell Public School District for the past three years. The purpose of the Mathematics and Science Partnership is to improve the achievement in mathematics and science by supporting programs that improve and upgrade the status of math and science teaching by encouraging higher education to assume greater responsibility for recruiting, training, and advising mathematics and science teachers. The Lowell Public Schools was fortunate to have received the Massachusetts Immersion Award grant in the fall of 2006, working with Dr. Andrew Chen Edutron, President and Former Physics Professor for Massachusetts Institute of Technology. Over 200 Lowell teachers and administrators have deepened their content and knowledge in mathematics and science. This grant has afforded Lowell teachers and administrators the opportunity to enroll in following courses over the past three years. Would you please put your hands together for these two outstanding teachers?
Thank you. Mayor Caulfield, members of the school committee, Superintendent Scott, Deputy Superintendent Franco, and Assistant Superintendent Murphy and Lang. Martha Con and I were very fortunate to have had this opportunity to go to Chicago and represent the Lowell Public Schools at this national conference. It's a conference where you go and you're able to tell your story, and tell the story we did. The Lowell Public Schools has been fortunate, as the mayor just said, to have the opportunity to provide content-level courses for teachers in mathematics and science as a result of the grant for the past three years. These courses have been intense and teachers have stepped up to the plate. The ultimate reason for the Massachusetts Science Math and Science Grant is for student achievement. And deepening one's content knowledge in mathematics and science is something that we know as a district is important for the growth of all of our teachers and our students. We've been very fortunate and we thank you for the opportunity. And Martha will share a little bit of her experiences as well.
Thank you. As the science teacher, I was able to participate in three of the courses put on by Dr. Chen, and it was a great experience to work with teachers that went from pre-K, lower elementary, all the way up to AP physics teachers, including middle school teachers, special ed teachers, and we all worked on the same content and were able to bring the expertise of all our great teachers together and therefore allowed us to gain confidence in what we're teaching, increase our content, and bring it back to our students. So, we were able to see where our students have been, where they are, and where they're going. And so, the whole experience was fortunate for our students as well as our teachers. Thank you.
Claire Abrams and Martha Con, you are the heart and soul of the school department. We're so fortunate to have you, and this presentation, I was elated to read that and go to Chicago and represent the Lowell School Department, but also, I think, presenting your education to people throughout the country. So, once again, I want to thank you, and you know what the Lowell School Department is all about, dedication. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor of accepting the minutes, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the minutes have been accepted and placed on file. Permission to enter, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The first is Brandon Residential Treatment Center, Inc., for the amount of $3,274. It's to amend an existing contract for a student who presently has an IEP. Funding is provided by the school department, FYO9 budget, special education tuition account. Coddington School, Inc., $10,809, again, to amend the existing contract for a student who presently is on an IEP at a district. Greater Lawrence Educational Collaborative, GLAC, for the amount of $64,090, to amend the existing contract to provide for the additional district tuition costs for 21 students plus eight additional students enrolled in receiving services as outlined in their special education IEPs. Funding provided by the school department, FYO9 budget, special education tuition account. Little People's Schools, Inc., for the amount of $11,800, again, to amend the existing contract to provide the additional district costs for one student plus one additional student enrolled in receiving services as outlined in their special education IEP. And, excuse me, Mayor, the rest of these are also all owed district placement tuition. Shall I read each one of them, because there are quite a few, and they relate to not only this year but to next year? I can go through, but there are multiple pages.
It's the wish of the committee, whatever you like to do.
That's the wish of the committee.
I just have one question, Madam Superintendent.
Yes.
Some of these are for fiscal year 2010. How can we approve money that we haven't voted on?
These are per the IEP's mayor, which is basically a legal contract. We are required by law to spend this money, and the state does offset these tuition payments through circuit breaker money. And, again, this is presently why we have millions of dollars that we have out of our operating budget as well, to offset these costs.
No matter what our budget is, we're going to have to...
That's correct, sir.
Ms. Fattacante?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we forego the reading and we vote for the contracts in their entirety.
Ms. Fattacante, a motion to forego the reading, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, if you forego the full reading. What's the wish of the body on approving this?
To move approval, Your Honor.
Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Moving on with the agenda, memorials by Regina M. Fattacante. Annette Tully, wife of B. Joseph Tully, former state senator and city manager, and mother of Joanne Tully Keegan, Chair of the Lowell Board of Health. Lawrence McFadden, father of Ann Brady, Rogers School Behavior Behavior Modification Specialist. Vincent Gugga, father of Peter Gugga, Rogers School Special Education Teacher. Jell O. Wayne, brother of Judy Wayne, Rogers School Teacher, and Ellen McDonough, Washington School Teacher. Louise Wheezy Cornell, aunt of Kelly Cloud. By committee as a whole. Alice P. Miller, Parent Information Center Retired Clerk. Stephen Charles Gleason, brother of Marley Sheehy, Dean of Middlesex Community College and former Malloy School Teacher, and uncle of Ann Sheehy, Instructional Technology Specialist. Edward Mulligan, uncle of Susan Mulligan, Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and Recruitment, and Daniel Simmons Teacher at Lowell High School. By James Leary. Michael McNeil, son of Mary Jo McNeil, food service worker at the Stockloes School, and nephew of Sue Gannon, Cook Manager at the Wang School. Could we all rise with Doc in chambers and have a moment of silence for these great citizens of our city? Thank you, may they rest in peace. Unfinished business, any unfinished business?
No, no.
Public participation. Paula Trudeau, 75 Smith Street, to speak on the future of the cafeteria workers, Finance Subcommittee Report of April 8, 2009. Paula?
Welcome, everyone, tonight. Thank you very much. My name is Paula Trudeau. I'm Cook Manager at Lowell High School. And I'm here representing the Lowell lunch ladies of Lowell. Now, the reason why we're all here tonight, I'd like to explain what got us to this point in the first place, and I understand we have a very large deficit in our budget, approximately $800,000, that the cafeteria workers now are having to deal with. And from what I understand, is many years, for many, many years, the school department paid for our health insurance. And we profited as a high school, and I'm not sure if the other smaller schools did, but I know Lowell High had a surplus of money. And someone that is no longer with us, Mr. Fattato, I believe, saw that we were making money and decided to put the health insurance in the cafeteria budget, knowing that we would never be able to pay for this year in and year out. Yeah, we covered the first year, but now several years have gone by and we're getting deeper and deeper. And I believe we're getting penalized for a mismanagement of money that we really didn't have anything to do with. And now, because of this deficit, we are in big trouble. We have frozen lunches coming into our smaller schools. I had bitters in my school last week, taking pictures with clipboards, asking questions to my staff. Kids were freaking out because they thought they were the FBI. I just, I just can't believe, I felt like my house was getting sold and I had to be evicted, and my own calf. No one told me these people were coming. And I've got a lot to get into, and I'm very nervous, and I'm going to do the best I can because I think a lot of the cafeterias have done nothing but improve their lunches, from the small schools taking on two hot lunches, adding garden salads and subs, myself having home-cooked meals, giving them sauce, freshly made chicken Alfredo, we have wraps ready to order. Our kids are very happy with our lunches, and now I understand they want to replace us with privatizing. And all I'm doing is trying my hardest to make my kitchen run on a shoestring budget. We haven't had a raise in five years, we have full-time positions that haven't been filled, but we're not complaining. While everybody else is sleeping, we're up in the morning cooking at my school for 25 to 3,000 kids every day, and we get them in my school and out in two and a half hours, and they love our food. And I think there's some kids here tonight that wouldn't mind letting you know that. This, this is what they want to give these kids. Now, this is the lunches that are at the Maury, a $20,000, a $20 million school, built with state-of-the-art equipment. They're not using any of it. They have three lunch ladies there with the man that delivers the food. Is that cost efficient? Are they saving money there with four people giving out frozen dinners? Which, this particular lunch has over 1,035 grams of sodium, and many others, I have a whole list here, I'll be glad to make copies. Is that homemade chicken Alfredo with garlic bread and salad? Is, is that chicken teriyaki and buffalo chunks that we give our kids at the high school? Now, I know we have a lot more kids to deal with than the small schools, and they say, "Oh, we're just going to get the frozen lunches in the small schools." We have to cut funds. Why are we getting stuck with this problem? What did we do? Why can't that money go back where it came from? Why is it our problem? Because we have health insurance and somebody didn't want to deal with it? Yes, Mr. Lang probably inherited this problem, but he didn't come to the cook managers of Lowell and say, "What can you do to help us?" He's supposed to be working with us, not against us. Everything is secretly planned, frozen lunches go in here, bitters coming into my school, not letting me know what's going on. No one came into my kitchen that day and saw the 600 calzones we made from scratch. We're not getting turkey salad. Thank you. We, we cook our own turkeys and we make our own turkey salad. We don't get frozen food already made. We get everything from scratch. We work hard. And I'm trying to go forward just to find out. You want me to take 10 steps back? I don't think it's fair that this is happening to us. And I'm here tonight with all these wonderful people backing me to hope that the school committee votes against these frozen dinners. I really don't think any mother or father in this room would want to eat this. And these kids go to school all day long, they work hard, they look forward to coming into my calf. We know their names, we know what they do after school, the sports they like, the music they like to listen to. We listen to these kids, they know our names. What kind of interaction are we going to have? What are we telling the future of America when we're giving them a frozen lunch or we got an outside company that really don't even know these kids? We have the heart and soul of this city, and I really don't think it should be pushed aside to save a few dollars that we did not ask for. And let me tell you something, this lunch, it doesn't tell you what's in it. It doesn't say anything about it. There's eggs in here, you'd never know it. So, people who are allergic to stuff, and if it's not listed on here, that's a no-no. And the kids in the second and third grade can't even open these. And I was told today about 100 of them got thrown in the barrel because the kids don't want them. And the Catholic schools have already started this, and those kids aren't buying it. So, I really think that you bring them to the high school, the kids are going to start skipping school and going downtown and eating elsewhere. And that's going to be a disaster. And I think, I just would like to thank everybody, I have a lot to say, but I can't be here all night. I'd like to thank everybody for being here and the support, and with everybody behind us, we're going to, we're going to make this work. Love you.
Michael Sheen would like to speak on motion number one, 97 Forest Street. Michael?
Michael Sheen, 97 Forest Street, Lowell, Mass. First, I'd like to thank the members of the Lowell School Committee, Madam Superintendent, Mayor Caulfield, for giving me the, the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to thank all the lunch ladies that are here tonight, people from the custodians, the parents, the children, nurses, and I'm president of the Greater Lowell Unionized Employees. We represent the calf, the custodians, and the security guards in Lowell. Currently, tomorrow, we have our election through the State Labor Relations Board, where we're going to appear on the ballot, and the other, so we're basically running unopposed. And then, one week after that, will be the Certified Bargaining Unit. I stand here tonight as president of the union. I also stand here as a, as a parent of a child that goes to Lowell Public Schools. And to be quite honest, I'm outraged that the school department would even look at frozen dinners. Now, my child eats in the Lowell Public Schools, and the one thing I always ask her is, I ask her, "How was lunch today?" She said, "It was great." You know, the children in Lowell enjoy the food that they're eating now. They don't want to eat frozen meals. They don't want to eat TV frozen dinners. You know, yeah, it's pretty simple, you know, I ask, "When's the last time you had a frozen dinner?" You know, "When's the last time anybody here had a frozen dinner?" You know, they're not very appealing. You know, I had the liberty to, to be able to look at the nutritional value of one of the, the frozen dinners that is being served. You know, I just did a quick thing, I timed it by the number of school days, and it's 257,000 milligrams of sodium. So, that's, that's in, in one of the meals that they'll eat in the total combined years. 148,000 calories. So, that's what the children in Lowell will be consuming if we go to these frozen meals. You know, and it's, in a time where, in the United States, where childhood obesity is at its highest, why do we want to go backwards in Lowell? You know? Currently, the lunch ladies in Lowell serve anywhere from 9,500 kids to 10,000. These meals are made fresh, like Paula indicated, and with lots of love. Absolutely. And to be honest, some of the best meals that these children will receive in a day. From what I gathered, and everybody else here has gathered, that the food service program has, is in the red. You know, and I would ask, you know, it seems unfair to penalize the employees that work in the program, the lunch ladies. And it seems they're being penalized for having healthcare. $666,000 is the school department's portion of the healthcare. And that $666,000 is dumped into their revolving fund. So, before they start collecting a nickel, there are already $666,000 in the hole. You know, and Paula had mentioned earlier that at one time, that wasn't the case, that the healthcare portion was an align item, like every other school department employee. But somehow, it has gone into their revolving account. You know, I was able to, to gather a little more information over at the town of Drakehead, where they currently have a lunch program similar to Lowell, but obviously not in the numbers that we have. You know, and I found out their, their healthcare portion is picked up by the town. It's not picked up by the employees. So, in theory, if, if you happen to be a lunch lady in Lowell, you pay 25% out of your pocket, and then you pick up the other 75 because you're being penalized. You know, you know, where's the fairness?
Michael?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm trying to... You know, in closing, you know, we know that, that they're serving these frozen dinners over in Charleston. You know, and I've had the opportunity to talk to some of the parents out there, and they don't like it. But, that's what they got. You know, 65% of the children that eat in Lowell are on free or reduced. So, you know, if this, if this goes through, they're not going to have a choice. You know, maybe the other people that, that are the paying customers, their parents brown bag it. You know, it's just unfair that, you know, the lunch ladies would be penalized for mismanagement of management. You know? And one of the other things I wanted to mention is, you know, we all, back quite a few years ago, we outsourced our trash department, you know, and look where we are today. We pay millions and millions of dollars. You know? So, in closing, I'd like to say is, don't privatize our employees. Don't outsell us the meals. Don't, don't penalize the children in Lowell because of... Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We always see the communication from Christine O'Connell, our city solicitor, I'll read it. Excuse me? We do? I don't have it on my agenda. Who was that person? Oh, Paula, I'm sorry. I don't have that on my agenda. Okay, thank you. Mr. Paul Judges?
Hi, Regina. Thank you, Mayor Caulfield, and school committee members, Superintendent Scott, everyone who came out. Although I am president of the teachers' union, I'm well aware of the nutrition needs of the kids. This is a poor community, and very often, the meal that the kids get at the school is the most substantive meal they have all day. To compromise that just does not make sense. But I would say that we have 115 cafeteria workers that we're talking about. 85% of them live in the city of Lowell. Live here, spend their money here, pay mortgages here, pay taxes here, are part of the community. They're the least paid people in the system. They can't control the cost of health insurance, although they may be relieved in the very near future, within a month, the Senate is supposed to come across with a bill that might impact all of us, and I'm looking forward to seeing that, what that looks like, because it could impact every city and town in the Commonwealth. But during the last three years, none of these people received any kind of salary increases. It's not your fault, it's not their fault. There was a disaffiliation that went on with the union, and a new, a union representative will be identified within the next 10 days. And all of this has been done with only peripheral contact with the people that were running or that were part of that union. Indeed, if you had a union representative, I mean, some people might consider it to be bypassing the union by taking an opportunity to start looking at privatization at a time when there is no effective union representative coming forth to represent the interests of the people here. I would suggest, Lowell can't afford 115 more people unemployed, and we sure the hell can't afford to have 115 families without health insurance. This is more, at a time when we're building a collaborative network within the systems, within the schools, where everybody plays an integral part, it doesn't send a good message to take a certain section, or a certain group, or a certain component of that community, school community, and say, "We're going to replace you with people from companies, privateers that come from," my understanding is virtually everybody that's shown interest comes from out of state. They're going to bring in people without health insurance, they're going to pay them low wages, and they're going to displace our members. We are totally aware of the fiscal reality and the budget crisis we're dealing with, totally aware. I mean, the gorilla in the room really is, how hard are we going to get hit? And I think everybody who's here tried to do something anticipating the worst-case scenario. But that doesn't mean that we should go in that direction under any circumstances. There are opportunities for unions to be extremely creative at the bargaining table. We'll be entertaining with you with that shortly. And we're not afraid to bite the bullet, as long as everyone's biting the bullet. The question is, the real question is, and I think we all recognize it, is stimulus money come from the state and the federal government, pretty much helps the school side of the ledger. But a decrease in funding to the city side creates an unbalance. And the question is, how bad will we get hit? To what degree? The city, even to this day, does not appropriate 100, 100% of the funding required under the state for the schools. How much will they go below that will determine how well off we are, or how poorly off we are in the very short, in the near future. But I think going to this extreme, to a point where you bring people into the workplace, okay, and have them look over the, the system, or look over what's going on so that they can make an adequate bid, I mean, what's next? Have these people train their replacements? It's an absurd notion, it's unnecessary, it's premature, okay? I think it, and it doesn't create the kind of environment where a number of... I think it, and it doesn't create the kind of environment where a number of entities within the system, including the larger unions, are going to be coming to the table to try to solve these problems equitably. So, I would ask you to table this. Put it aside. Exercise whatever we need to do, fight like hell to make sure that we get adequate funding for our schools. To try to look toward the, the national mandate that might be coming down through the Senate and the House in another month on, on some alternative health plans that could give us some relief. Could give every community across the Commonwealth relief. Something we've advocated far right along. Universal healthcare. We know if everyone had universal Medicare right now, the cost of health insurance in the city of Lowell would be dropped by almost 50% in one day. What kind of relief would that be, Mr. Caulfield? Okay? And we're not afraid to look at it and any other alternatives that we need to do. But these people are part of the school community. We need to let them know they're valued. We need to let them know that we're not cavalier about their lives, and about their futures, and about their jobs, and about their health insurance. And I want to commit that, that I think to create the environment we need to create in order to attack the problems we have with this fiscal crisis are largely going to be determined by what other people are willing to do too, on the city side of government to save the city. But also, in our willingness to be collaborative, to be cooperative, and that's not going to happen if you attack a small group of people who are drastically underpaid, who have worked diligently for this system, and, and provide an invaluable service to the community. So, that's all I wanted to say. The teachers are with you. We'll support you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Judges, for those remarks. I have a communication from the city solicitor Christine O'Conner. I imagine everyone has received that communication? I will read it. Mayor Edward Caulfield and members of the school committee regarding pending RFP for the school food service program. Dear Mayor Caulfield and members of the school committee, I write in response to a request of the superintendent that the law department respond to the pending motion before the school committee relative to a current request for proposals for food services should the motion pass. Accordingly, the law department has begun reviewing the RFP in conjunction with the purchasing office and the finance and operations office of the school department. It is anticipated that final review of the legality of the RFP and the process utilized shall be completed by Monday, May 11th, 2009. In the event that the RFP and the process utilized are contrary to applicable law, the school department will be notified and will take appropriate action. Appropriate action will include cancellation of the RFP and possible res- solicitation. In the event that the RFP and the process utilized meet all legal requirements, the process will be merely continue as scheduled unless the school committee decides otherwise. The committee's ultimate role in this matter would be to approve or disapprove the final contract. As soon as an opinion is, is completed, I shall provide the committee with a copy of the opinion and would be prepared to answer any questions at your next regularly scheduled meeting, very truly yours, Christine P. O'Conner, city solicitor. Accept the communication, place it on file with Mr. Leahy. Second by Mr. Leary. All in favor?
Aye.
Sign the consent, aye. That is placed on file. I have a motion, and Mr. Doherty, would you like to come up here?
We have a motion by Mayor Edward Bud Caulfield. Request a legal opinion from the city solicitor on the recent RFP approved by the finance subcommittee regarding food service in Lowell public schools. The maker of the motion?
Thank you.
I guess I need a second first. I'm sorry. Second by school committee woman Regina Fatacon.
Thank you. In 1988, city manager James Campbell approached me, the mayor, and several other counselors. And he wanted to bring in a bond for $130 million to build new schools. And I couldn't believe the figure of $130 million was before me. I was a freshman counselor. And he said, "Counselor, just go out and visit the Lincoln School and the Butler School. Then come back and tell me what you saw." Kids didn't have a cafeteria. They didn't have a kitchen, gymnasium, auditorium, nothing. There were kids in closets, in hallways, being taught. And the vote for that $130 million was unanimous. It sailed right through. The first school we built was the new Butler School on Gorm Street. It gave the opportunity to every child a hot nutritional meal. Mashed potatoes, gravy, meatloaf, and vegetables. I voted for the new school, the Maury School. And Madam Vice Chair, I went up there last week, and I was sick to my stomach. We have invested $175,000 in a state-of-the-art kitchen, all stainless steel. And you know what they're using up there? The warming ovens. They heat up frozen lunches. I said, "This can't be real. I can't believe this." And to make matters even worse, I knew nothing about this pilot program, Mr. Lang, nothing. I don't think anyone else knew about it. And I was in Florida when I found out about this RFP. This committee consists of seven elected officials. Not three, seven. The subcommittee is exactly what it says, subcommittee. They have no authority, no power. They go to a subcommittee meeting, and they bring their recommendations back to the full body. That did not happen here. That did not happen here. Madam Superintendent, was the unions contacted at all?
Presently, as previously stated this evening, um, Mr. Mayor, there is no union.
There's no union?
Not for this, uh, group of individuals. We, you know, we will have a union in the next couple of weeks, and there are issues with regards to impact bargaining, and, you know, there are issues of timeline, if there will be enough time to negotiate what has to be negotiated. So, all of these issues, um, are presently, have to be looked at as soon as we have a union to deal with, and that is a concern.
Look, I know, and everyone knows and realizes, there's going to have to be cuts. We've already made them on the city side of government. There has to be cuts in the school department. But I, as the mayor, I'm not going to pick out a cafeteria worker that makes $11 an hour. Middle management, Madam Superintendent, is making big bucks. You know, we're saying that the cafeteria, the food service is losing money. Do we make money on the football team? Do we make money on the high school band? Do we make money on fine arts? Do we make money on assistance? Do we make money at all in the school system? Of course not. It's a service we offer, and the service is education. And one of the speakers earlier indicated, some of these children, is the only time during the day when they're going to get a hot nutritional meal. That's the only time they're going to get. So, I'm not going to belabor the issue that there's a motion before you. I'm hoping that three of my colleagues will support this motion and present it to the solicitor, because I honestly feel what was done here was totally illegal. I've been in government for 22 years. This was blatant. This is not democracy in action. I knew nothing about it, and neither did the three, uh, two of my members on, on this committee. So, it's, it's wrong. What happened here was wrong. Let's correct it, and let's move on.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Taking a look at, at this motion, it's a shame that this motion actually had to be put on here. Back last week, somebody came to visit me in my home and showed me this, the goods and service bulletin, and pointed out that there was an RFP sent out for cafeteria services. And asked me what I thought of it. I was embarrassed to say, "I don't have the slightest idea what you're talking about." Nobody ever told me. When I found out, I did a little bit more research, and I found out that it came out of a subcommittee, which I couldn't believe. I mean, I, I've been around here long enough to realize that a subcommittee, as one person said to me, "It's like batting practice. This is the game right here. This is what counts." This was brought forward, and three of the school committee members had no idea what was going on? I find that irresponsible, to be quite frank with you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway.
I'm not, I'm not finished. Oh, no. I'm not finished. And when I take a look at what we're bringing forward to privatize the cafeteria services, as the mayor has mentioned, we have approximately 115 employees in the city of Lowell servicing our students. Over 90%, 95% of those individuals, women, live in Lowell, support Lowell, and yet we turn around, and we want to bring somebody in from the outside to take those jobs. I think that's terrible. I know many of these women because I was in the system for a number of years. They put their heart and soul in what they do. And it's a shame. It's a shame that we take this group of individuals that are making somewhere around $12 or $13 an hour... 11, thank you. Making $11 an hour, and we go after them first. That does not make any sense to me, and I think we all realize that we're going to have to make cuts. But I think if we take a look and put everything on the table, and yes, there could be some cuts. There might be cuts. Who knows where they're going to come from? But going after $11 jobs at this particular point makes no sense at all. And when I hear about this $600,000, $700,000, that's baffling, because the bottom line is, do teachers make money for the system? Do administrators make money for the system? Does central administration make money for the system? And we expect the cafeteria workers to do that? I think it's a shame. And I'll tell you, the other thing, the other point I want to make, because I know other individuals obviously want to talk on this subject. I hear that last week, individuals from central administration are bringing the vendors around to the cafeterias while these ladies right out here are servicing our students, cooking those meals, and we're bringing people around? That's in- that's insulting. That should never, never happen. I most definitely will support Mayor Caulfield's motion. Thank you.
Ms. Fatacon. Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I, I'm going to just lay out a little historical significance, because everybody knows I've been around here longer than Durritt. Um, we did this, and we looked at this a few years ago, probably before any of my colleagues ever sat in these chairs. We had Assistant Superintendent Wrigley take a look at doing the very same thing for us. Um, he, we, together though, as a school committee, put out an RFP to bid and took a look at that, then asked him to do some research for us. Here's what he, here's what he found out, and here's why we never eventually went to privatize our program. He found out that there's a savings for about five years, and then your lunch program evens out again, whereas it becomes to, it starts to lose money again. So, you might have a savings for about five years, but eventually, that savings gets eaten up. He also discovered that there are hidden costs that the privatization company usually doesn't tell you upfront. Um, hidden costs for, for a variety of things that all of a sudden come at you, and that you've got to pay for. It was said to us at the time that the current staff, the cafeteria ladies, the lunch ladies, would eventually, would hopefully be hired by the new privatization company. But there was never any guarantee that any single employee would be brought on to the company. There was also never any guarantee that, that anybody hired would get any health insurance. The lunches we serve our youngsters, as we've all heard tonight, are an important facet of what we do. We started a breakfast program a few years ago in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because we recognized that kids come to school without breakfast, because they come to school hungry. And one of the things that we know about our lunch ladies is that they know who those kids are. And they'll wrap a little sandwich up, put a little piece of fruit and a milk in a bag, and send something home with one of those children. That is, that is the ecology of who they are for us. And I recognize that we have enormous cuts that we need to look at. But here's a couple of things I'd like to suggest. I would prefer not to make any cuts until I can see the budget in its entirety. I think that it's extremely important for us to have everything laid out in front of us so we can see where the biggest part of our money lies, and where the smallest part of our money lies, and then act accordingly. So, I, I'm uncomfortable with moving forward, um, because I'm uncomfortable with making the, making the progress to make a cut when I don't have the full budget in front of me. The other thing that I would like us to do is, I would like us not to open any of the RFPs, have them remain sealed until we get an opinion from the city solicitor. I think it's important to have an, a, a legal opinion that tells us whether or not we have the legal right to go ahead before we open up any RFPs. So, I would prefer that those, all those bids remain sealed when the bid process is done on Friday. We recognize that our lunch ladies do a great service for us. They, they know our children as much as our teachers do, and sometimes maybe more. And that's why I, I would not like to make a decision that displaces a group of, and I'm going to say it, mostly women. Um, I think 98% of our cafeteria ladies, our lunch ladies are women, who care about our kids. We live in a difficult city. We face the most incredible challenges. And part of what helps us face that challenge is that meal every day that gets handed across the counter to some youngster who recognizes that somebody put some thought into it. So, I would, I would ask this committee that we hold off on making any decision. I respect the members of the subcommittee. I truly do. I know we send stuff out for bid all the time without coming before the school committee. But in my recollection, we have not sent anything out for bid this enormous without the full vote of the school committee. And I have to tell you that I am not prepared to take that vote, at least not tonight, at least not without seeing the budget in front of me. Now, I recognize there are some cost-saving measures that we can adopt, and I'm very willing to look at those. But I don't know if those cost-saving measures extend to the elimination of 120 employees. And, and that's what I would like to see in its entirety. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Mr. Leary?
Um, thank you.
I think what you said is exactly what we're trying to do. We're trying to procure information so when we do sit down three to four weeks ago from now to do the budget, we actually have this information. I think some people are a little confused. The RFP, no. With all due respect, with all, with all due respect, Matt, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect.
Okay, I think Mr. Leary has the floor right now, please. I would ask the audience to please be respectful. Mr. Leary has the floor. Thank you.
With all due respect, we're looking for information. Potentially, we're looking at $4 million to $8 million in cuts. And Ms. Fatakanti, you're perfect with what you said. We aren't going to make any decisions tonight. We don't know what the RFPs actually even said. We don't even know if they would be viable or, or of any benefit. We don't know if we're going to be cut $8 million. We don't know if we're going to be cut $1 million. I would opine that if we're cut $8 million, just back up on a reference point through you to the chair. $8 million, we closed a Varnum school last year. That was $1 million in savings. Eight million. So we want to look at everything. I don't want to cut the health, I mean, health workers, I don't want to cut the nurses, I don't want to cut the teachers, I don't want to cut anybody, especially food service. And it's interesting, and I enjoy, and I enjoy listening to a lot of the information saying the finance subcommittee issued an RFP. No, we didn't. I thought we were going to vote on this April 15th. I was showing up April 15th to explain it. And regarding to the union, I know you don't have a union, but we welcomed Michael Sheen as if he was part of the union. We had a good dialogue with Michael. I've had conversations with Michael Sheen ad nauseam, and I respect a lot of his points of view. And what I've articulated to Michael, and I will articulate to the body, no option has been unturned yet. We're going to look at everything. So with all due respect, I don't know if I would vote to replace the food folks. I wouldn't, I don't know yet. I don't have that information. What this is, is pieces of information. So I guess if you, if you don't want the information, I can respect that. I want the information. We're going to be making some major decisions. We may have to close some schools. We may not. But none of us, as Ms. Fatakanti articulated, we don't know, and as Paul George, the union representative from the UTL articulated, the big gorilla in the room is, we do not know what that final number is. So why don't we look at everything? Why don't we look at the central office? Why don't we look at principals and vice principals? And we're going to. I think that would, and many members agree with that, we're going to look at that. With all due respect, and I, and to the folks that showed up, thank you very much for showing up. I appreciate having the opportunity to share that information with you. I apologize. You're right, it's not fair. I've been laid off too. It's not fair. There's nothing that makes you feel good about it. The anxiety level's not good. I'm sorry for that. However, if you're looking at $8 million in cuts potentially, I'm going to tell you something, be upfront with you. I'm going to look at everything. And so I apologize for your discomfort, but $8 million is a lot of money. And just to give you a reference point again, the Varnum school was $1 million. Now, you may disagree with me, and that's good. Please let me know. But I think the bottom line is, we want that information so we can make informed decisions. And I, and Ms. Fatakanti was 100% right. And I, and thank you for that information because I think that's the focal point. Get that information, understand what this means and what it doesn't mean. Once we have that final number, that's exactly what our bottom line budget is, then we can have our debates, make decisions whether we're going to close a school, whether we're going to remove and go, incidentally, privatizing's not the only thing they're looking at. You're looking at, we held up the foods today. That's not privatizing. So a lot of information needs to get out there so you fully understand what we're fully talking about. And a lot of the information you pointed out today is good information. But what you're talking about, the Moore School, is not privatization. That's keeping people. It's probably actually, if you look at it from a personal perspective, it's the worst case scenario because you're cutting people's benefits. And that is the worst. Privatization means you would probably save your jobs and make money. Ms. Fatakanti's right though. I've heard the same comebacks. After four or five years, you start to lose money. You're 100% right. Those are the comebacks that we're looking at. But we don't have all that information yet. What we're trying to do is get that information so we can make final decisions. It isn't easy. I respect you for showing up here. I appreciate your, your involvement. We all know people who work there. We, last thing anybody wants to do is remove someone who makes $11 an hour. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. I think that we have just crossed over into what's going to be perhaps the most challenging period for this Lowell School Committee. I think that it is incumbent upon all of us to recognize that, that these are difficult times, that the choices, the Hobson choices we will be facing together as a committee are going to be challenging, to say the least. I think in all honesty, they're going to be searing. I think they are going to absolutely cut to the quick and to the bone at every level and in every way, our district. I think that we are all charged now with serving in these positions at a time when it is absolutely critically important that we make our decisions with the most information possible. It would be unconscionable for us to go into a budget season without all the information that we need. And I think that that is how we will make reasonable, logical decisions that will help us rescue this district in these incredibly troubling times. I think that as we look at what's in front of us today, and I, I recognize that the, our cafeteria workers are responding as, as if they're being singled out. I apologize that that's the way that this has kind of happened and, and the way that it's, it's kind of rolled out at this point. And I know it's not much comfort, but the reality is, it's not that you're the only, it's that you're the first, and you're the first of many. And we are going to have incredibly difficult conversations with, when, with, when your union representation is in place with them, we're going to be having equally difficult and, and challenging conversations with every union that we work with. And the reality is, is that no one is going to come out of this budget season unscathed. All we can do, and all that we are charged to do, is to ensure that we make the best decisions we know how to make. That is not an easy job. It's not a job that lends itself to great theater. It's not a job that lends itself to outpourings of support. It's a job that at the very, at the end of the day, is going to leave all of us battered and bruised. And certainly, I don't look forward to it. I know no one does. No one on this committee relishes being in this position. For myself, and I know Ms. Fatakanti has been here significantly longer than I have, but in my 10 years, I've never sat in this seat with such fear and such trepidation about what lays before us. I've never seen numbers the way we're seeing numbers being laid out for us right now. And, and it is quite honestly frightening to think what our district will be at the end of this. It is going to require the people in this room working extremely diligently, always remaining focused on the, the end, the end goal, and most importantly, because what we do in this room is really, you know, what happens in a very select atmosphere. What really is going to save this district is going to be the commitment of the thousands, over, you know, the several thousand people who do the work every day. That starts at, at central office and it goes straight through the entire district at every level, and, and I value the work that happens at every level. I find myself having a very chilling kind of response to the way that this has happened. And I think that for us to be defending a request for information is, makes me think that this is, is not going to, we're not doing what we need to do to even save ourselves from the, from what this process can do to us. I think we need to be open to all opportunities. I think that the concept of making our budgetary decisions as part of an overall comprehensive vision is the only way we can function. And the only way to make comprehensive decisions is to have all the information possible in front of us. So I think that the process, and I don't serve on the finance subcommittee, I did attend this meeting and did get the information at that time. I know that that was the whole purpose of this, was just to make sure that we are making the best informed decisions, because to not do so would be to belie the oaths we took over a year ago. And, and I hope that as we all move forward through this process, that we can recognize that while we will have many disagreements, and we will have many competing priorities, the concept needs to be that with the best and most accurate information, we will at least have a fighting chance of making choices and decisions that will place our children at the very head of the line and ensure that the educational and, and support services that we offer are indeed still provided to the children who so desperately need them. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I just want to say that, thank you for all coming down here because this is how government works when you participate. Any of you that know me know that I've eaten the food in the cafeterias and I love it. I want to thank Ms. Fatakanti for her calming words. I think that she said it best, as Mr. Leary said. And it was never, I don't think it was anybody's intentions to eliminate healthcare, eliminate a whole program, the lunch staff. The whole, my understanding was that the whole, this motion was just to gather information. And I thought that the, the administration was in their rights to gather information, and that's what it was about. I was, I can't believe how out of control this got. It's not about taking people's jobs or lives or healthcare. I mean, I would resign before anybody lost their healthcare over this. This is not the right thing, and it wouldn't happen. I don't think anybody here would even thought about that. So, I mean, we're here to support you. We're here to get information, to make good decisions for this upcoming budget. And I, you know, I went to a few schools and I, I know what you people do there. I've been down to high school a few times, and they run a great job down at the high, they do a great job at the high school. So, but as some of my colleagues said, you know, we're trying to get information to make good decisions. Could we have done it in a better way? Maybe. We may have scared some of you. We may have insulted you. We apologize for that. But trying to get information was the whole intent of this, and we'll see where it goes from here. But I tend to agree with my colleague, Ms. Fatakanti, tonight. There's no harm in tabling this, just to see where we are. We don't even know what the budget is going to, you know, where we are yet. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else on this motion? Madam Superintendent, did you have anything to add to this?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I guess at this time, we should take a roll call on this?
Madam Chair, I'd like to get some, some facts from you on this issue.
Are my colleagues okay with me speaking from the chair?
Sure.
Thank you. Actually, I really appreciate that because as you may know, Your Honor, I am on the finance subcommittee. I think it was one of the saddest subcommittee meetings I've attended in my five years of service on the school committee, just thinking about the cuts we're facing. And, and one of the speakers mentioned how it's not fair. And I would say, it's not fair that for the last five years, I've watched the school department have to do its job with cuts every year, looking to do more with less. It's not fair that people are losing their homes and their jobs, and that the city is facing a huge deficit. It's all not fair. But my intention as a member of the finance subcommittee that night was to get all the information, because we are going to have to make cuts. We don't know how deep. And we need, as was said by earlier speakers, all the information we can. And my concern with this particular motion, Your Honor, with all due respect, is my understanding was that the finance subcommittee did not make the request for RFPs. We were going to report out the next night. I believe we were supposed to meet the next night. That meeting was canceled in the afternoon. I was told we didn't have a quorum. My understanding was the superintendent actually did the RFP. So if I could make a motion to amend your motion, to just add, you have said a legal opinion from the city solicitor on the recent approved by the finance subcommittee regarding food service, and whether, I would like to add the words, and whether the superintendent has the authority to issue an RFP. That would, I need a second on that.
Can I rebut that, Madam Chair?
I, I guess it's only if I have a second can we discuss it, right?
This is the plan reformer government that we're governed by. Look at Robert's Rules of Order. No subcommittee can circumvent the committee as a whole. And this is exactly what happened here. A subcommittee has no authority or no jurisdiction to tell anyone to do anything. They have to come back to the full committee. And that's where, that's where my question is. What, what happened here was illegal. And we do it all the time. Mr. Leary, you read a quote in The Lowell Sun that you should have brought it back to the full committee.
No, no, that's incorrect. You may want to read the paper again. What I said was, I thought we were going to be voting on the full committee, but it didn't bother me because that's what we were going to do, vote on the full committee. But we didn't have a meeting on April 15th. The finance subcommittee did not request authorization for the RFP, with all due respect. You are misinformed, you are incorrect. The more you say it, doesn't make it any different. All due respect. The RFP was issued. What I said in the paper was, well, we need this information because the time's running out. We're going to have to have budget deliberations at the end of May, beginning of June. If you delay it, then you're not going to have that information. You're going to make information in a total vacuum. That's what I said. Go back and read the paper. I thought we were going to vote on April 15th. For whatever reason, we didn't have four people for a quorum. I was ready to go. I was ready to explain it. I talked to Mike Sheen at Ad Nauseum, said, Michael, get ready to speak on it on April 15th so we can have that vote. Sorry. With all due respect, you're misinformed.
Mr. Leary, would you bring something of this importance and this magnitude before four members of the school committee when you know three were absent?
Time-sensitive kid? Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. We had to do this to make information. The bottom line is, we're not, if we were to do this, it doesn't mean we're doing anything. It means we're obtaining information so when we look at the entire budget, we can as committee members make informed, intelligent decisions. Now, you can say at that point, I'd rather close the Moody School, or close the Washington School, or close this. Or, it may not even come to that. It may just be $1 million and we're looking at a significant stimulus. My whole point is, we don't know. So let's prepare, and I think another quote I said in the paper, let's prepare for the worst and hope for the best. Now what we got is, we have some, you're making statements that are not accurate. More importantly, with all due respect, I would never try to get away from any member of the committee making and hearing themselves. And I also went out of my way with members of that finance subcommittee to ensure that someone, Michael Sheen in particular, had his time to talk about it in front of the finance subcommittee. And I actually said to him, Mike, bring people down April 15th, and you can ask them, get ready for that meeting. So with all due respect, I don't want to hurt anybody. I just want to make sure, Mayor, when you look and vote on something, you have a lot of information, so you can say I have a lot of information to make that decision.
Don't you think out of common courtesy, you could have informed the other members of this committee before you made this rational move?
We didn't make any move. With all due respect. You're good political theater, Mayor. With all due respect. What you're saying, Mayor, is I don't want the information, okay? I don't want that information. What I'm saying is, I like to have the information. That's all. And now, we can make a decision once we get that information. So you know what? What you're saying basically is, April 15th was a regular scheduled meeting that's been scheduled for two years, and people are showing up. I'm ready to prepare, we go forward and vote, yeah. Because I was going to go and show up at the meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, just, just one last thing.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Your Honor.
Madam Superintendent, who authorized you to send out this RFP?
Your Honor, it is standard practice within the school department for us to put out RFPs.
No, it's, it's, you do it all the time for paper and pencils, janitorial supplies, nothing like this to eliminate a food service program in Lowell Public Schools. Nothing.
Right.
Now.
I would.
Move the question, Your Honor, Madam Chair, because this is getting to a point where...
I'd like to let the superintendent answer. Let's try to straighten this out, please.
I would, Your Honor, bring your attention to the opinion of Chris O'Connor. And the second last sentence says, "The committee's ultimate role in this matter would be to approve or disapprove of the final contract." When I asked for specific clarification on that line, again, it was because the school department, through its finance department, can issue RFPs. That is only, again, I know is irritating and it's not to men, is not meant in any way to be disrespectful to your position, but it was a collection of information so that action could be taken. And I think that that's an important point, that this whole debate tonight and whole issue really is, we share your position on our concern for not only these workers, but all of the other workers that we now have to look at, every union, and as I mentioned to you on the tele... to you on the telephone when you first brought this to my attention, your concern, um, about the matter, that all of the unions, all levels of our organization are going to be unfortunately hit, and hit very hard with regards to the level of cuts. This particular issue came in the time it did, although unfortunate for, for all of you here, because this particular account is in a deficit position. It doesn't even get us to zero if, and we do have an obligation where we're looking at $4 to $8 million a cut, to bring information so that you can make a sound decision upon. So, in fact, when the Subcommittee did support an RFP being put out there, no red flag raised for me on this particular matter for the RFP to go, oh, to request the information, because it was standard procedure of the Low School Department, which is standard procedure with every school department, which is exactly the point that, um, the city solicitor is making.
I just, just one last thing, Madam Chair. Madam Superintendent, I remember that conversation that I called you from Florida...
Correct.
And I remember every word I said...
Yes.
And I remember every word you said.
Yes.
And I said, "What's going to happen to these cafeteria workers?" Well, they can go work for the firm that's going to supply us with the frozen dinners, and they won't have health insurance.
Right.
Right.
Mayor, if I, that is a pos, could I respond?
Madam Superintendent.
Yes, Mayor, when you asked me the question, and I'm not being argumentative, but I would like to clarify, so when you did ask me, "What are some of the options of what could happen to our employees?", I shared your concern that, yes, people could perhaps lose healthcare. Yes, in fact, people could lose perhaps their pensions that they've given into the city for decades, that this was a very serious issue for us. And in fact, some employees would be able to stay, maybe, some employees would lose their jobs. Again, the conversation was, I, me sharing your concerns, that all of those issues we would be facing.
Okay, um, I'm going to try to go in order. Mr. Conway.
Madam Chair, through you to the Superintendent place. Just a, just a clarification, please. Did you decide on your own to put that RFP forward, or did you get direction to put it forward?
Again, the issue came up at the Subcommittee meeting, and we did explore, I'm going to answer it, but in the context of the meeting, it was explored that we would proceed to gather this information, and that an RFP would be issued.
So you got your direction from the Finance Subcommittee? Is that correct?
I think, I don't think that's exactly fair. What I believe is fair is that they supported that standard procedure.
You can finish.
That they, that they supported that action. They, you know, it wasn't a vote to say, "Go ahead, do it," that that was going to be the next action.
And, and this is, and what you're saying is this is standard procedure? The RFPs?
Again, RFPs are issued, um, from our Finance Office on a weekly basis. That doesn't negate the fact that, given the significance of this issue, that it would have been ideal if we would have had that next meeting, so that it could have been brought forward at that time.
But those, those RFPs that you, you issue...
Yes.
Isn't that from monies that have already been allocated?
Again, this is not, the issue, again, with all due respect, this isn't an issue of an RFP resulting in the expenditure of funds. This is an issue of, uh, of basically bringing an RFP forward so that you have all the information to act, to spend funds.
But Madam Superintendent, with all due respect, here is a situation that is going to drastically change the way we're doing business in the Low School Department, and it's affecting 113 employees, our employees. I would think that through, through the collective wisdom of the Superintendent's office and the Finance Subcommittee, that you would have got together and said, "I think we certainly should include the other three members of the School Committee in something as serious and as important as this issue."
Okay. Uh, thank you. Mr. Leary. Oh, you, I'm sorry.[907.82][907.82](APPLAUSE). Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. Um, I just want, from my perspective to my colleagues, we're not changing anything. We're gathering information. And I don't like sitting here with some of us getting everybody riled up. We're not changing anything. A request by management for information. A request for information. That's what it says here. "To accept the recommendation of the administration to publicly advertise and solicit proposals for all possible options of operation and management." It does not say in this at all to wipe out 115 jobs. So let's just move on. We're getting information. I'm not, nobody's here to get rid of all these people. Read the motion.
Okay. Ms. Fattakani.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Just, um, three quick things. This is an enormous issue. And historically, when we face enormous decisions like this, we face them as a group, because they rise and fall upon our shoulders. That's why we get elected. And when I say group, I do mean seven of us. It would have, I would have appreciated having some firsthand information that we were going out to bid on this. I would have liked to have had this discussion prior to the RFP being sent out. I'm, I'm never going to be ashamed of vigorously defending my opinion when it comes to our schoolchildren and our employees. Never. And I will, as each of my colleagues, will sit here and vigorously defend what we believe in. And I think what some of us are saying is that we're concerned about going forward. So I'm going to make a motion that we table the opening of the RFP and not go forward with the process until we have some information from the City Solicitor's Office.
Second.[1050.83][1050.83](APPLAUSE).
I would, if my colleague would amend that to include, can the Superintendent issue RFPs, then I will gladly support that, because waiting till May 11th isn't going to change anything, basically. I think that's, you know, they go back...
So are you saying the amendment that I offered earlier?
Basically, but we're going to wait, but Ms. Fattakani's saying, "Let's wait till after, after May 11th." The point, it's interesting, and I, and I want to say this, because I wasn't going to say this, but I think it's important to note. I was in Seattle, Washington, when I got a call from the newspaper, Jen Myers, saying, "I heard there's an RFP issued out." And I could, I'm going to ask Ms. Myers what I said to her. I said, "Really? I, we didn't vote on that. We haven't made a decision yet to do that." Now, what I did say is, boy, we need that information, because I was ready to show up on April 15th to get that, because my responsibility as the Chairman of the Finance Subcommittee, as a member, is to get you that information, so you, when you sit down and make decisions on overall budget, you're cognizant of whether this is a good idea or not a good idea. And there's been good, some good points. When I started this out, I was going to start going after you for what you've been saying. But Ms. Fattakani changed my direction completely, because she articulated that we need information. She also pointed out some good facts that are, that are coming to light, that a lot of privatization doesn't always pan out over time. But this is information. So I want the information so we can make a decision. And I'll support your motion, Ms. Fattakani, if you amend it to include the Superintendent, because that's what happened. Thank you.
Are you okay with that, Ms. Fattakani? To include the Superintendent has the authority to issue the RFP, as well as the tabling it till May 11?
My, what I, what I want to have happen is that we table this specific RFP, this specific request for proposal. If we want to have a discussion about other requests for proposals, that's okay, but I'd like to have a discussion about this specific one, Ms. Dougherty, and that we table this until we have a city solicitor's opinion. Yes, I recognize we send out RFPs all the time, but not when we are going to have a substantial change in the way we do business. That is something that comes from the entire committee. So my, my amendment is that we table the opening of this RFP until we hear from the city solicitor and get a legal opinion from the city solicitor's office.
So if I understand you correctly, you're not, you're not talking about the Mayor's actual motion at all. You want to table the whole RFP. That's a separate motion.
Well, I'm, I'm amending, so I'm adding on to the Mayor's motion.
Substitute motion.
It should be a substitute motion.
All right, thank you. Substitute motion. What will we do without you? June.
Who has a substitute motion? The substitute motion is to say, table the RFP till we hear from the city solicitor about whether the RFP was obtained legally.
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
And do we have...
Wanted for clarification before...
Mayor Caulfield seconded.
Pointed for clarification, but what is the city solicitor looking at?
She's looking, I assume she'd be looking at the way the RFP actually happened.
Okay.
Because I think in terms of how the Finance Subcommittee views it, we ended our meeting planning to, as the, as Mr. Leary pointed out, report back to the committee the next night. That meeting was canceled, and we went away. I went on April vacation, you know, with my kids. Ms. Martin.
Can I ask, and I don't know if anyone, um, either through past experience or, or professional experience might be able to answer this, uh, the ramifications for this being determined, illegal, which is the Mayor's point, that, that this behavior was illegal, what are the legal ramifications for that committee, for myself as a, as a observer? Um, I mean, is there, is there some kind of, I don't know what the consequence is, should we take it upon ourselves to declare the actions of this body as illegal? So I don't know what the, what the attorney tells us.
Ms. Fattakani.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. To my colleagues, I think that we would wait for an opinion from the city solicitor. And I, and, and I think that the opinion could be, "This is how you fix it." Um, I, I don't think it's, uh, I think it's going to be, "This is how it should have been done, so you need to go back, erase what you've done, and move forward in this way." I think that's what we're, we're probably going to get from the city solicitor.
But we, we could get, that, we, there's a liability attached to this now, that, that there could be action taken by parties, and now we're open for a lawsuit. Okay, that's great. That'll be good.
Okay. Okay, so I think we should, we should take a roll call on the substitute motion, seconded by Mayor Caulfield, that we're going to table...
Read the motion again, please.
...table the opening of the RFP until we receive a legal opinion from the city solicitor for the, the obtaining of the RFP was legal.
Thank you.
Do you want her to read it again?
No, that's fine.
You got it? Okay. Ms. Fattakani.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martinus. Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.[1394.51][1394.51](APPLAUSE).
Your Honor, should we take a five-minute recess?
Yes, I think that'd be wise.
Motion for a five-minute recess, sir?
Motion for five-minute recess, but Ms. Fattakani seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Recession's in order.
Um, so, uh, substitute motion, substitute motion, yes, you know, okay, as soon as you know. Yes, I know, I know that. I know, I know. He said, said everything. Let's hope everybody here heard us.
Thank you so much, Mr. Caulfield, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Caulfield, and thank you so much. Da-da-da, can't, can't. Are you kidding me? Do you see the agenda? All right, yeah. I'm over on us today because our girl is getting sloppy. I work all week at the Lowell High. I've been called hundreds once and followed. I've been the hundreds of times.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fatacante. Here. Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on with the agenda, a motion by John Leahy. Request the superintendent sent out a thank you letter to the Department of Public Works thanking them for the crosswalks on Boylston Street and South Lowell, seconded by Connie Martin.
Thank you. Hope the Lowell son gets this, can you fit it in tomorrow? I did want to just send the appropriate letters out because over by the Bunton Club and South Lowell off of Boylston Street, the DPW with probably federal money to improve the roadways and sidewalks, and that area has kind of been a problem for us for the last few years. Mr. Dakota's done a good job of getting the kids to the schools safely so they didn't have to walk, but now I notice that the sidewalks over there, crosswalks, and the whole area is quite different, and I just wanted to, I just thought we should recognize them because for a few years we've asked them to do crosswalks to make it safer for the kids to walk, so it is much better over there. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and I know TJ McCarthy will be elated with that thank you. Thank you very much. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving on with the subcommittee reports. Joint Personnel and Finance Subcommittee, approval of the minutes of April 1st. Connie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're really just approving the written minutes. I had given a verbal report at our last, at our last full school committee meeting, so I would just submit these minutes for the approval of the full committee.
Move of approval, your honor.
Move of approval by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. The minutes have been approved and placed on file. Finance Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of April 8, 2009, James Leary, Chairman.
And I think part of it has already been tabled, so we already had a lengthy discussion regarding it. I think the other parts of the meeting we're talking about is just the '08, '09 status third quarter, general discussion was held. I don't think we need to, if anybody has any questions regarding it. The federal and state stimulus packages, I know that the cabinet will be going to, I guess, a urban superintendent meeting on Friday to see exactly where, or hopefully to find out exactly what type of stimulus package we would be having. As we went over at agnozium, nobody knows what the bottom line deficits are going to be for next year, although they've been estimated anywhere between $4 billion and $8 million. But again, that's a, it's clear as mud at this point in time. So I guess I would just move for a report of progress at this point in time.
Everything with the exception of food service.
Yeah, that's been already taken care of.
Except the report as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. The report has been accepted and placed on file. The last Subcommittee Report, Joint Special Education and Finance Subcommittee's Report and Approval of the Minutes of April 8, 2009, Jackie Dougherty, Chairman of Special Education, and James Leary, Chairman of Finance. Whoever would like to go first.
Thank you, your honor. We did have a joint meeting between Special Education and Finance on April 8. In attendance were myself and my subcommittee members, John Leahy and Connie Martin. Also in attendance were Chairperson Jim Leary, and myself and John Leahy, who are also on Finance. One of the things that we discussed was, as my colleagues may recall, we've made a number of changes in special education in the last few years regarding our compliance with special education timing laws, and we were happy to hear that we are now in full compliance with the timelines underlined by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So that was very good news. We also learned that in addition to the timing compliance, the Department of Education is now looking at performance compliance and has submitted a state performance plan for special education. So now, not only are we looking at meeting the state's guidelines regarding the timing of when students are tested and evaluated and all that, but we're also really taking a look at the actual program that we're giving our special education students, and if they're making adequate product, progress, and how we could improve that. So in line with that, Special Education Director Deb Westerway presented a draft report, which I believe you all have a copy of, that has been structured in a three-tier format, and a lot of this obviously will be based on the stimulus funding that's coming down from the federal government, which has been identified that a portion of that money will be specifically for special education. But if I could just call my colleagues' attention to the back page, Tier 1, when you look at, because a lot of this, you know, they're big-ticket items, obviously, we're, you know, we don't know how many, how much of this we'll be able to implement, but just for an example, if you look at the first three initiatives regarding children in the autism program, the emotional disabilities program, and life skills, that the total investment in that, those three areas, would be about $628,000 for the district. But without implementing those changes, we'd be spending $2.1 million in out-of-district costs. So we would see an immediate savings of $1.5 million in the number of students that we would be able to keep in Lowell and provide services to those students, and we think by keeping them in their city, provide a better service. So that's one way to look at some of these special education initiatives, and also to keep in mind that the rest of that, those changes are really going to be dependent on the stimulus package. But I just want to, our motion was to report it out to the committee as a report of progress, and just to kind of keep you updated on what we're looking at as we restructure special education.
Except the report as a report of progress, placed on file by John Leahy, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The Subcommittee Report has been placed on file. Reports of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, your honor. The first one's with the F, with regards to the FY '08 actual net school spending and the FY '09 budgeted net school spending. Attached, please find the communication with Commissioner of Education, Mr. Chester, pertaining to the City of Lowell FY '08 actual net school spending and FY '09 budgeted net school spending amount. After final amendments were reported to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on the FY '08 end-of-the-year pupil and financial report, the City of Lowell failed to meet its spending requirements on education by $308,752. This shortfall is added to the FY '09 spending requirement based upon amendment of the FY '09 city and school department budget figures provided to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on the FY '08 end-of-the-year pupil and financial report, the City of Lowell will fail to meet its spending requirements on education in this year fiscal FY '09 by $387,126. This shortfall will be added to the FY '10 spending requirement.
Okay, if you want, yes, Ms. Martin.
Just a quick question on this, just so I'm understanding this. So is this meaning that we're $700,000, does that accumulate over the two years, or is it just, we're looking at the $387 for FY '10?
That's my, that's my understanding. The city side is to be in compliance with performance and net school spending.
Okay.
Jay Lang, would you like to?
Thank you. As of June 30th, it's just the $387,126.
Correct.
Because the amount that's, that you're underexpand is added to your requirement for the following year, and then it's 100% of that requirement. So they're only looking at the $387, not the combination.
And I do appreciate Assistant Superintendent Lang looking into this matter, and having the Commissioner reissue the letter with the correct amounts on it after the 9C cuts and the clawback that the city had to take from the school department with, which amounted to over $600,000, because this adjustment is significant for us and will impact FY '10. So thank you, Assistant Superintendent Lang. The next memorandum in front of you with regards to the budget calendar pertaining to the upcoming FY 2010 School Committee Budget deliberations, and it's my understanding that I need a vote of the committee to approve this timeline and these dates.
Ms. Dougherty?
Your honor, I have some concerns about the budget timeline, and the first one is Wednesday, June 3rd, is Lowell High School graduation, so that's got us as making a vote to approve the budget, and obviously, we're all going to be at the graduation. I also know that we still haven't gotten a lot of the information we need, and I just wanted to throw it out there to the board. If we kind of push things back a week, I had a conversation with the city manager just in passing, that he was hoping to have everything done by the end of May, middle to end of May, now he's looking at early June. So I'm just wondering if this might be a little ambitious, because we don't have all the information yet. I don't want to be, you know, trying to make cuts when we don't have everything in front of us. The other factor to consider is several of our subcommittee meetings have had to be pushed off. For instance, Lowell High School is going to meet next Wednesday on May 13th. We have a very big agenda. We're now not meeting until maybe the following week or the week after that. Curriculum is not meeting until May 21st, and I know that a lot of the, you know, the substantive dent stuff, and transportation's got a new date now. We were supposed to meet tonight, we've had to delay that because there's more information that's being gathered. So I've got some concerns, and I think one would be, obviously, we can't do June 3rd unless there's another plan.
Well, go ahead, Madam Superintendent.
Would it be suitable to the committee for us to take this off the table and come up with another timeline?
Ms. Martin?
If I could, and I, I think we all recognize that we're trying to budget on shifting sands right now. I mean, but it's a universal situation that we're all in. My concern is if we put this off by a day, I mean, we need to be having these conversations, setting priorities, and, and I think the, you know, we're going in kind of looking at this four to eight-million-dollar deficit. I think we need to have in place those big changes, those big, you know, whether it's, as I know Mr. Leary mentioned, like last year, closing the Varnum, things of that scale, these really earth-shattering changes that will happen will probably be, you know, necessary here in the district. But we need to have those conversations early so that we can make, again, well-founded decisions as we move forward. I recognize that we may get different numbers at every one of these meetings. I mean, I, I think for any of us who are working in the, in the, you know, kind of public sector, we all know that state budgets are just, you know, there's no solid numbers, I mean, everybody's fighting the same fight. But we have to be as best prepared as we possibly can be, and the only way I think we can do that is by getting the information as it stands as soon as possible, and in all honesty, our being able to have these priority-setting conversations in a reasonable timeframe so that we're not in this huge crunch of, you've got one night to make $8 million worth of cuts, because nothing good comes from that. So I, I mean, I absolutely understand my colleague's concern about the timing of this, and I don't know how we even make this work when I know in the past, we were always required to submit our budget to the manager prior to his submission. So, I mean, we're talking about submitting at the exact same time already. If he's going to be doing it at the beginning of June, we're already pushed back.
And I agree with you, Connie, that we could never have enough dates to look at the budget, and I suggest that Thursday, June 4th, I mean, just move it up a day. And Madam Superintendent, do you have the budget at all put together yet, or are you working on that, or?
Most definitely, your honor, and as just discussed, at the various subcommittee meetings that are coming up over the next few weeks, significant budget issues are going to be discussed as outlined in the FYI packet that I sent out to the committee on Friday. So I do hope that people can attend all of the subcommittees that are coming up, even if you're not a member of that committee, because there will be many significant issues that we are looking at. So...
Have you scheduled a meeting of the committee as a whole for May 11th on the Finance?
I believe we're having executive session after the Finance Subcommittee. Finance is going to begin at 6:00, so that we're not starting too late.
So committee as a whole?
Yes, to talk about the whole collective bargaining piece and going forward with that.
Because that impacts our budget as well.
And I actually, I agree with my colleague that if we, we should try to stay on track, and my colleague to my left, we and I, we were just discussing, we know the dates for these other meetings that have been changed. Transportation is May 18th, curriculum is May 21st, Lowell High School is May 26th, assuming Mr. Conway can make that, because I didn't get to hear back from him. So if we moved the Wednesday, June 3rd, to Thursday, June 4th, that was your honor's recommendation, we can be at the high school. And I know that Friday is adult ed graduation. It's always the Friday after Lowell High.
And we'll all be at that.
Right, so that's like, you know, three nights in a row, but, you know.
So we're going to move the date up from June 3rd to June 4th? Is that agreeable?
Yes, your honor.
Okay. As amended by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fatacante, the budget hearing of June 3rd would move up to June 4th? Okay, Mr. Leahy?
Sure, thank you. The 30th, though, is that Memorial Day weekend?
No, it's the weekend after.
Oh, after, okay.
So all in favor of that amended time? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That's been corrected, okay, coordinated program?
Thank you, your honor. I am pleased to inform the committee that we have received notification from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that our district was found to be in compliance with all criteria monitored in the special education mid-cycle regulation. with all criteria monitored in the special education mid-cycle review on March 17th, 2009. I'd like to congratulate Ann Murphy and her staff in successfully completing this mid-cycle review. I know a lot of work has been done on compliance issues within the district, and I commend the school committee for supporting these initiatives over the last few years, because it has taken financial resources to do so, and Ms. Murphy and her leadership. Thank you.
Any discussion on that?
Okay. Let's move on. We'll accept the report as a report of progress.
Accept the report, Your Honor.
Accept the report as a report of progress. But let's do that at the end of...
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
That way, we'll save some time. Okay.
The next report is the Integrated Comprehensive Resources in Schools. Is a grant-funded initiative through the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, which seeks to integrate community resources within the school setting. The initiative addresses the areas of academic support, behavioral health, professional development, and family engagement for children with all levels of need. I am pleased to report that the McCullough School has been chosen as a model school for this initiative. The McCullough School, in its third year of involvement with the initiative, is one of only four model schools selected from the 18 Massachusetts communities participating in the grant, and will present their model at a statewide conference. Based on the school's success in establishing trauma-sensitive environment with staff investment and parent support, the grant administrators believe that the McCullough experience can help state educators understand how a school can develop into, quote, "a full-service community school." Congratulations to all of the staff at the McCullough School.
Okay. Move right on. And the next report?
Summer School, 2009. Through a variety of funding sources, we anticipate that we will be able to offer a summer school program for students in grades K through 12. Attached is a grid outlining this year's expected offerings. Below is a summary of the projected programs. And I would like to comment at this time that some of these programs are now available to occur and happen in our district because of stimulus dollars, as well as other grants that we had received in the past. Continue, Your Honor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry, just, so, looking at the summer school. I know that in the past, we've had some concerns that we kind of send out the invitation to summer school, and we don't necessarily see these full numbers. I'm looking at these kind of estimates for the number of students and all that. Last year, as I recall, Deputy Franco, you might be able to refresh my memory on this one. We took a different approach where we, I believe we were targeting students and making more of an effort to ensure that they were attending. Could you tell me kind of what the results of that were, and if that's indeed the plan again this year?
I'm going to let Ann answer this, just because the summer school's under her regard, but...
Yes, last year, we were targeting, at the elementary level, we were targeting students at the Merkland and Maury Schools, and specifically those schools because of being Commonwealth priority schools. This year, through some grant funding, we've been able to expand the elementary program to run a math program specifically for the Merkland School students, and a literacy program for the Riley School students. The other schools that are Commonwealth priority schools, those students are going to be targeted, and we'll have a program for them at the Shaughnessy School. Okay? Our programs this year are going to only be four weeks long. We are definitely targeting students. We were, Janine Durkin at the Freshman Academy was able to secure an additional grant, which is going to, we're going to be targeting our eighth-grade students, some at-risk eighth-grade students. Each middle school is going to be able to identify 10 students, which will be coming down to the high school for this program, that is really going to help the students adjust to the ninth grade, to really target these at-risk kids, and look at their attendance, their success rate in school. It was a wonderful initiative that they put together. We are hiring staff that, and we're telling staff that their hire is grant-dependent and enrollment-dependent, because we certainly don't want to have classes with only three or four students in it, that we will be combining sections, especially at the high school level. We know that we have a variety of classes that need to be offered for the credit recovery program at the high school, but we will not be offering as many sections if we do not have the enrollment that we need. So, we will be combining those, and making sure that staff are hired on an enrollment basis, grant-availability basis.
Any questions? Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. I just have one editing comment. You've got listed that the program starts Tuesday, July 6th. Tuesday is July 7th, so I don't know if it starts on Tuesday or Monday, July 6th.
It should be Monday, July 6th.
Okay, great. Thank you. But I think, I think that what we saw last summer, we had much more, you know, focused turnout, and I think that that success, we can build on that, so that's great. Thank you.
Any funding requirements, Ms. Murphy?
It's all grant-funded.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, we'll go on a roll here.
Thank you, Your Honor. And would it be okay if Paul Georges also came to the mic to invite the school committee to this next event? To share that? Okay. So, this has been sent out to our entire school community again. It is an invitation to come to the Stockloss School on Saturday, May 16th, from 9:00 to 11:00, to come and share our, part of our kickoff to our celebration of working together, collaborating, union management, so that we can improve student achievement in our schools. The AFT has graciously sponsored the event. They are bringing in a superintendent of schools from Los Angeles, who has recently been voted Superintendent of the Year, and the president of that local, to speak to the history in their district over the past decade of how, together, they've been able to work to, again, improve student achievement and take schools off of the underperforming list. Paul Georges, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd just say...
I need a suspension of the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, so that Mr. Georges can speak?
Second. Thank you.
All in favor of the suspension? Signify by saying aye. Mr. Georges?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. The collaborative mode seems to be extremely effective in many school districts across the country. AFT, being obviously a national group, represents teachers and paraprofessionals in systems very similar to Lowell. They tend to be an urban district's union. They tend to, you know, places like Chicago, Detroit, New York City, LA, Miami-Dade County. And they have an expansive research department that has a lot of information about what works and what doesn't work. And to be totally honest with you, in years past, I have made that gesture with past superintendents about trying to be more involved with those kinds of things that were being shared at national conventions and other venues, having to do with improving the profession. Al Shanker, who was sort of the great guru of the American Federation of Teachers, who unfortunately passed away several years ago, believed that unions should also be strong, but also progressive. They should also look at how to improve performance, how to improve the delivery of services to kids, and how to improve standards. I think we're taking advantage, we are taking advantage of some really data-driven, research-based information that says that teams working at schools in a collaborative, cooperative way have the greatest potential for moving those schools forward, for making critical decisions within their own schools. We also know that the data we had from the UTL surveys a couple of years ago, and the TELs data that came that was sponsored by the state, indicated that we had some real problems in the schools, having to do with school culture and climate. They were identified at a workshop that the superintendent and some central administrators and some union leadership worked with the DOE during the summer. When we found that this collaborative sort of initiative was available to us, we seized it, and to look at it, because we identified through that data, that came from both the UTL surveys and the state, and it was remarkable how the state survey really mirrored the UTL information, that we, and we knew we wanted a different kind of a culture within the system. In fact, the superintendent and I traveled to every, went to every single school during the winter, met with every teacher that wanted to meet with us, to talk about what was going on in their schools, and using the TEL data to identify what the major problems were at those schools, and encouraging teams to work together to try to address those problems. As a matter of fact, this summer, at a Quest Institute, Tom Gosnell, President of the AFT, and I are going to do a presentation at the Quest Conference down in Washington, because it has been successful. I think the school culture has changed quite a bit with the new superintendent, and we welcome it. I think there's more of a sense that we're, that teachers are valued as valued practitioners, have a wealth of experience, and we know that from our surveys, that two years ago, 84% of our members felt as though they had very little, if any, input into the initiatives that were being adopted by the system. That's not a good place to be as a practitioner, because it sort of discounts your value as a professional. So, along with that, we have availed ourselves of some professional development that was available through AFT out of New York. We attended meetings in New York. We saw how it's done. We came very excited about it, and that prospect of creating those collaborative teams at schools that we believe are going to be so effective. The people that are coming in are people who are very knowledgeable on how it works. That you'll, if you come, we would invite everyone to come to this particular event. We look on all the school committees, city council, anybody who's interested, the editorial board from the newspaper, anyone else, because we want to have support for this movement. We believe it is the best way to move our system forward, where the collective wisdom of every participant is valued and communicated to direct, to address the needs of our kids. So, we're very excited about this collaboration, and I think it's going to help in other ways, too, because we certainly do have substantial obstacles, you know, fiscally. We all understand that, and working together, and I think it's just going to be of much of greater benefit to everyone, particularly at this time. So, we have faith in it. We believe in it. We'd like to invite you to come to learn more about it. We're trying to schedule some professional development opportunities for the teams to participate in the activities. It sets up sort of a, I guess you could put an itinerary of how best to create those teams in the most effective, effective way. And we think it's going to really be helpful in moving the system forward. If you don't involve the practitioner in making the decisions, you've really lost out on the greatest source of wisdom that you have there. And many of you have articulated that same concern, or same, you know, that same sort of sentiment that we're talking about. So, I hope you will participate. I hope you will support it. And again, you know, we have a number of teachers and management teams that will be at the school, at the Stockloss. It's two hours on a May day, a May Saturday, but we hope that you'll make every effort to get there. Anything else, Chris, that I might, that I missed?
You summed it up perfectly.
Mr. Georges, on behalf of the committee and the superintendent, I want to thank you for your collaboration, working with us, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Well, I appreciate it. We all, look, we...
That environment wasn't always there in the past, and no fault to yours.
No, and I think the environment wasn't there in the past for any one of a number of reasons, but, you know, not to mention sometimes the occasional jab or the barb that we get from other entities that don't necessarily like to see us cooperating, because it doesn't necessarily help pay newspapers, sell newspapers. But the point is, if this is going to work, it's going to work because we work together.
But we're all in this together, and we know we have some difficult days ahead, and if we don't work together, we'll never accomplish...
Yeah, and I, again, I would like to ask that, particularly the Sun representative here, to try to get, we'd like to involve them to be more, so that they be well-informed about it, have some faith in the movement that we're trying to do this collaboratively. That true collaboration affirms value to people, gives them ownership to programs, gives them ownership to their school. When people are motivated in that way, they do their best work, and our kids benefit the most.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. The next report is the Middle School College Fair, and this was a wonderful evening that we had recently, on Thursday, April 16th. More than 500 middle school students, parents, and staff participated in what was called the Pathway to College Awareness Now. Our first middle school college fair held at the Butler School, with over 83 college exhibits, many of which were accompanied by college representatives and admission directors. Students were exposed to a multitude of information. And we would like to thank the Butler School Principal, Elise, and her staff, as well as Palachi, and the parent liaison, and the middle school and Lowell High School guidance counselors, and the staff of the Middlesex Community College for their tireless efforts in organizing this event. It was wildly successful, and we look forward to putting it on again next year. The next report, District Plan for School Intervention Review. Please find attached the Spring 2009 District Plan for School Intervention Review, that's presently being undertaken by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. And I won't read the entire report, but basically, the district's under a six-month review. We had our last review just in last spring, and they're coming to revisit our MOU with them, our memo of understanding that we have with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with regards to the initiatives that we are presently undertaking to improve our student achievement in all our Commonwealth priority schools. And the timeline is in that report with regards to when that process will conclude, and when it does, the report will be issued by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed and will be brought forward at that time. The next report, the School Committee Meeting Dates over 2009, 2010, and I believe I need a vote.
Move...
Second.
Move or pull by Connie Martin, seconded by Ms. Fattackany. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. And we accept the communication, place it on file. Right? Wes, go ahead.
I noticed that two of our meetings fall over, one falls over February vacation, the other one falls over April vacation, and another meeting falls during the Lowell High graduation. I'm wondering if there's any interest in my colleagues in maybe changing some of those dates now, or looking at it as they get closer? I just know it's difficult for me, as a mom, to not be able to...
What's your graduation, June 2nd?
Next year, yeah.
2010.
I'm talking about the next year's schedule.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I don't know if you want to just wait till we get closer. I'm just thinking, it's hard to not be able to take April vacation or February vacation, because we have meetings both those months. I don't know if anybody cares, or we just want to stick with the schedule. I just thought I'd bring it up, because I'm aware of it.
Well, you can just, you know, don't attend that meeting. Go on vacation.
And then we, okay. I mean, that's kind of what happened to us in the last meeting. We didn't have a quorum. I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't April vacation, but it just turned, it was like a perfect storm of people not being able to be at the meeting, but, okay.
On the June 2nd, we can always move that meeting up a week.
Okay. I was thinking about the February and April ones, but we could, as we get closer, see if there's any interest in doing that.
Ms. Martin?
That's absolutely, I was just going to say that. I mean, I think as we get closer to those times, if we recognize that there's going to be an issue, then we can, we can take the action then.
Okay.
I know it's not as, I know it's a challenge, but...
This is just a yardstick, really.
Okay.
Get some, you know, a little bit of notice beforehand, then.
And then we can plan, you know, yeah, okay, that works for me. Okay, great.
We'll cross the bridge when we get there.
Okay.
No.
I think we just...
No, ask me. Okay, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Personnel Report. There any questions? No? Okay. And the last report is from the following parents. Barbara Moscow from 671 Beacon Street, asking for homeschooling for her student. If granted, the number of families approved by the Lowell School Committee to homeschool will total 33, and the total number of children will be 57.
And...
Are we going to move on that one?
Your Honor, I believe that we must have a roll-call vote on the home education, sir.
On the homeschool. So, I would, I would motion to accept that request, to homeschool that...
And Madam Superintendent, we're going to have some formal get-together for these teachers that are retiring, with a citation, thanking them for their service?
Okay. Next meeting, Your Honor.
Roll call on the Personnel Report?
No. The roll call is on the motion to accept the request to homeschool.
Oh.
And I need a second on that.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Roll call?
Ms. Fattackany?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway, he's absent. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Okay.
Motion to take a vote, your honor, want to accept all the reports.
Motion to accept the superintendent's report, as a report of progress by Ms. Fattacani, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor, signify by say nay. Those reports have been accepted, placed on file, and now we're moving on to new business. Vote to return the Old Mori Elementary School to the City of Lowell. And I recommend that the Lowell School Committee take the following action after April 15, 2000, regular meeting, pertaining to the transfer of the Old Mori Elementary School located at 114 Pine Street back to the control of the City of Lowell, as it will no longer serve an educational purpose. I recommend action on the following vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Fifteen A. As amended, the school committee of the City of Lowell hereby declares that the land with the buildings there are known as C.W. Mori Elementary School located at 114 Pine Street. Lowell is no longer needed for school purposes or any other educational purposes, and further hereby transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said land and the buildings there on to the City of Lowell to be used for such other municipal purposes as the appropriate officials may determine. Any questions, any debates on this? We take a roll call.
I need a person, a second.
Move approval.
Move approval, Fattacani, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Convention conference request?
I make motion to take them in their entirety, your honor.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to take the entire convention conference request as one, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Communications, let me see, the City of Lowell, City Manager Bernie Lynch, and you've all received this, and it indicates, Superintendent Samaras, Lowell High School, 50 French Street, Lowell, Mass., 01852, Lowell Scholarship Program. Dear Superintendent Samaras, I write today in regard to the City of Lowell Scholarship Program. Regrettably, the City of Lowell must discontinue the program. Historically, the city, through its operating budget, has generally committed seventy-five thousand dollars to the Lowell Scholarship Program. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue and the city's outside auditors inform us that it is illegal to use general fund money to fund a scholarship program to benefit individual recipients. The Law Department confirms this decision. While this is unfortunate, as the scholarship program has been a great success over the many years of its existence, and has assisted many Lowell residents towards pursuing higher education, the program cannot be sustained in this manner. I have informed the City Council that FY-09 was the final year the program would be funded through the general fund. Funds will not be included in the fiscal year ten, and scholarship applications will not be distributed to schools or accepted from applicants. Thank you, and feel free to contact Assistant City Manager Andy Sheehan or me, manager's office. Accept the communication. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify, my understanding is that, well, I guess it's more of a question rather than my understanding. The opportunity that people have to donate to the scholarship fund when they pay their property taxes, that's not, is that impacted by this?
No.
My sense would be, okay, so those are separate donations that attract separately, not part of, they'd never go into the general fund, so they're considered, okay.
It's in the city budget, is a line item in the city budget, seventy-five thousand dollars for scholarships, and the Department of Revenue said that you can't do that. It's illegal, and the manager informed the council and me that it can't continue. It has continued since 1992, and the energy plant on Tana Street, Linogia, had promised the City Council, if they had built a plant, they would contribute seventy-five thousand dollars to the scholarship fund, and they reneged.
Yes.
And I made a motion to insert seventy-five thousand dollars into the budget, and it's gone on since 1992, 93. So we've had all those years, many students have benefited by it, but just can't do it no more, so. Yes, Ms. Leahy?
Thank you. So we were informed this year that it was illegal. We did it for nineteen years without anybody red flagging it.
If you want to question the Department of Revenue, John, I'll give you the number.
No, but that's what they were telling us.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me ask you this. How can we continue this? Can we come up with a, how can we, with the City Council, continue some sort of a scholarship then?
Can't. Where are you going to get, first of all, where are you going to get the funds?
Well, we've been doing it for nineteen years. I thought it was a, it was a, an important, it was important to us, so I thought that it was a good program we had, and just because there's a roadblock, maybe there's something else we can do. So I didn't know-
The auditors who come in and audit our books, informed the manager last year, you can't continue this program. It's not legal. And what we're doing is we're contributing taxpayers' money to students who attend certain schools, and you just can't do it.
Well, it just seems like a shame to stop it.
I know, but-
Maybe we could, maybe there's something else we could do to do a scholarship program, so.
Well, you can have private fundraising, but, Ms. Martin?
Actually, what may be feasible, I mean, and it would be based on the will of the council, and certainly yourself as the maker of this initial motion, if you still felt the same level of support for it. One option, I think, would be if that seventy-five thousand dollars was earmarked for the dual enrollment program, which allows current Lowell High School students to attend, whether it's Middlesex or the university, it would still be an expense borne by the district as opposed to being paid to outside institutions.
Right, right.
So I mean, that would be the, it would be a decision that you and your colleagues on the City Council would have to make if you wanted to continue to do that, but I know that it's an area where we've had a, you know, a cut in funding, and that may give us the opportunity to offer more students that opportunity, and I think it would solve the DOR's concerns on the way the money is paid out.
I know Council Leader Missia brought forward a motion, and she has also spoken to Chancellor Lemien, given the kids in Lowell some sort of a break for tuition costs and so forth. He indicated to us that he's going to do that, so, and Middlesex Community College hopefully will do the same thing, but I know where you're coming from, John?
Yeah.
But it's just, we got away with it since ninety-two.
Oh, I know, nineteen years, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, tidying of bad news, Madam Superintendent, let me see, I'm sorry.
So set the communication, place it on file?
Accept the communication, place it on file by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by say nay. The communication's placed on file. Consideration of statute disclosure, you know anything about that, Madam Superintendent?
Move approval, your honor?
Move approval, Ms. Fattacani.
It's from our school committee council.
Seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor, signify by say nay.
Aye.
Any opposed? And letter from Handsome Air Force Base?
This was pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Roll call on the disclosure? Roll call on disclosure?
On the statute disclosure?
No, on the, yes, your honor.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Madam Superintendent, do you want to bring that forward about Chief Master Sergeant Bobby Jakes?
Yes, it would be a pleasure, if I can read the letter in full. For fourteen years, Handsome Air Force Base and Lowell High School have shared the talents of Sergeant Bobby Jakes. Because of Chief Jakes' dual roles, both Handsome and Lowell High School have developed a partnership relationship that benefits both communities. I know that you are well aware of just how valuable Chief Jakes is to your school and community, but I wanted to take a moment to let you know about a significant decision we just made regarding Chief Jax to recognize his contribution to Handsome AFB. The sixty-sixth Air Base Wing has given an award to a deserving airman that most exemplifies the Air Force core values of integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. Typically, the winner has shown the finest qualities of our airmen while making significant contributions to the quality of life of our airmen, their families, and the base community. Until last month, the award has been known as the Handsome Spirit of Above and Beyond Award, but on February 6th, we formally announced that the award would be now called the Sergeant Bobby Jax Above and Beyond Award. I can't imagine a better namesake for this important award than the chief. His example of handsome community, both while on active duty and as a civil servant, perfectly defines what this award is designed to recognize. It honors the service of all past recipients and raises the bar even higher for future honorees, as Chief Jax's legacy of service continues to grow. Your honor.
Let's say a wonderful thing that happened to Chief Bachelor Sergeant Jakes.
I wonder if we could suspend the rules and make a motion that a letter be sent congratulating Chief Jax on his work and his honor?
Motion to suspend the rules, your honor.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Fattacani, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, to request a letter of thanks.
I request that a letter of congratulations be sent.
Right, and the mayor's office will also present a citation to Robert Jakes.
Just a second.
Need a second on that request.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Dougherty's request for a letter.
To send a thank you letter to-
Yes.
And you, Fattacani, seconded.
I second it, yes, your honor.
All in favor of the motion, signify by say nay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. During the press conferences with the various health departments and every major TV station was in here in front of City Hall, there was a gentleman from WBZ Radio, and he's a, has a very distinct voice, and I told him about the program we have in Lowell, about helping the elderly. I think his name is, I forget his name, but he had it on the radio that day, and a couple people told me about it. So Bobby Jakes is just an outstanding, outstanding person.
Yes, he is.
Outstanding.
It's a great program.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on.
One more.
Go ahead.
One more. Letter of congratulations, should I receive?
Yeah, go ahead.
Another letter of congratulations to Air Force Junior ROTC Unit MA-771 at Lowell High School for earning the Distinguished Unit Award for the academic year of 2008, 2009. The Distinguished Unit Award recognizes the personal growth and accomplishments of the cadets, the contribution of the instructors as mentors of the cadets, and the support of the school and the community. The Distinguished Unit Award is limited to the best of the, the best of the best of our nation's eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine Air Force Junior ROTC units. Please present the enclosed certification to Headmaster William Samaras and the ROTC instructors cadets, and pass along my congratulations on a job well done. A suggested press release is also enclosed. Our congratulations to all.
Okay, accept the communication, place it on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any questions pertaining to that, or any thank yous you'd like to send out, or anybody? Okay, let's move on with the agenda.
Professional personnel.
Professional personnel. Essential services vacancies in the Special Education Department?
I bring this forward to the committee at this time in response to a motion that was taken earlier in the year with regards to a freeze on hiring. These positions were presented to you at an earlier time because of compliance issues within the Special Education Department that we needed to hire these, fill these vacant positions, and the funding for the requests of your positions is available through a special education grant.
Okay.
I need a motion.
Motion for approval by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin. We need a roll call vote on that.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
The members of United Teachers of Lowell hereby request to donate sick leave days. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval, your honor.
Move approval by Ms. Fattacani, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, take a roll call.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Before we adjourn, I just want to thank my colleagues. It was a good meeting, debatable, we put everything on the table, and I would have rather been any other place tonight except here. But it's my job, and I just have to show my emotions on an issue, and that's, and I did. So, but I want to thank my colleagues for getting involved in the debate and see if we can work this thing through. And there are going to be serious cuts in the school department, but all seven of us will determine it. So with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn by-
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Ms. Martin.